Welcome, everybody. We're gonna start our meeting now by taking roll call. And how did we get here tonight? We do, it's a full house. We all received a copy of the minutes from our May 16th meeting, which was a special meeting to approve the budget proposal. Ask if there's any amendments that need to be made to those minutes before I ask for a motion. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So move. Second.
All those in favor? Any abstentions? You have 20.
Softball season, sorry.
I totally understand. We do have one adjustment to the agenda that was emailed in our packet of information.
Yes, item 12C would be to respond to a request for an unpaid leave of absence.
And now, this is a time where I'll invite anyone from the community to step up to the podium if you'd like to address the board. If there wasn't anyone that signed in, but I certainly invite anyone who didn't have the opportunity to do that. Great. For Board Chair Report, I just wanted to publicly thank Jessica King. She has submitted her resignation to the school board. Jess, I don't know if you want to say anything about anything?
I just would like to thank everybody for the opportunity to be a member of this board. I think that's an excellent opportunity for anybody that is interested in helping out in the community. Just for me, at this time, it's not a good fit for my family, so...
Well, we definitely want to thank you. You were a tremendous advocate and representative for the Winterport community, so, and their students.
We also came to remind you, our other Jessica, this is her last meeting.
Oh, my word, it is!
Yes!
So, thank you, Jessica Giles, for stepping in when somebody stepped down to fill a term and then to rerun as well, so, thank you so much. What is it, it's four years? Three, three years.
Three.
Three glorious years.
Glorious.
So, thank you as well. Anyone, sorry, anyone else that's getting off the board next? We'll see you guys. Okay, I'll hand it over to Rick for personal.
Okay. We have no resignations to report this evening. Under nominations and transfers, I do want to publicly announce that we've transferred Heather Patterson, Grade 1, to Grade 3 at the Smith Elementary School. If you reference your agenda notes, we do have nomination, two nominations this evening. The first one is the Spanish teacher at the Leroy Smith School and the Wagner Middle School, Danny Lobo Leon. You can see that actually Danny currently is teaching at the Weatherby Elementary School. He's been an educational technician. His salary per the prescribed contract is $34,150. My recommendation for your endorsement is Danny Lobo Leon.
So move. Second.
Need discussion?
I just, I just want to say, I don't know what Mr. Lobo is doing, but I hear about it a lot.
He's right over here.
I have other grade or年级 leaders, and they are very excited with whatever it is that you're doing.
Wait, before you, you have kids that...
I do have children. Yes, they're very excited with the work that you're doing.
And I might add, Mr. Lobo started out the year of the med tech in our school, and he coaches, he does everything, kids love him, he's doing a great job.
My daughter's played for him and absolutely loved him.
Wow, I mean, this is wonderful! Alright, all those in favor?
Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you. Okay, the next nomination, Alyssa Libby, mathematics teacher at Handland Academy. You can see Melissa has a master's degree from Eastern Virginia Medical School, PhD in chemistry, a number of years teaching elsewhere. As long as we're personalizing it, I met Alyssa's husband today as he toured the school. He's a graduate of Handland Academy, 1991, if I remember. Pardon, 1991? So, my recommendation for your approval, Alyssa Libby, mathematics teacher here at Handland Academy.
So move.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Fantastic, welcome.
Okay, Alyssa, where is Alyssa on the... Now, we move to three exhibits. The first one is my recommendation for those first-year probationary teachers to second-year probationary status. They have been evaluated per board policy, they're recommended to me by their respective building principals, and I ask for your endorsement of the list and the exhibit. First-year probationary teachers to second-year probationary teachers.
Make a motion, we accept them all as asleep?
Second. I'm actually going to ask if you could remove your...
Sure.
Because Amanda would like to abstain from the part of the slate, if that makes sense.
I...
So if you...
So move.
Were you doing a slate as in for the whole, all probationary teachers?
For, from 1 to 2.
Okay, okay, got it. Alright, alright, then we can do it. Motion accepted and seconded by Jane. Alright, any questions? Alright, all those in favor? Great, thanks, sorry I misunderstood.
The same explanation is applicable to second-year probationary to third-year probationary, the slate that you can see there as well, I recommend for your endorsement.
So move. Second.
Great. Any discussion?
I think this is the one that we need to...
Do you wanna abstain? She's gonna abstain. Okay, all those in favor? And an abstention?
Abstention, I am abstaining, my sister is on this list, so, but if I could vote for her, I would.
Thank you. Good endorsement.
It's saved Thanksgiving.
All these are very important appointments, but probably more so the next one. Moving from a third-year probationary teacher to continuing contract was a big step in the teaching profession. What this basically means is you move from one-year contract to a two-year contract. Some people call continuing contract tenure, so those terms are interchangeable, if you will. So, these people have been with us for three years, they've been recommended through the process of the evaluation model, been recommended by their respective principal, so I ask for your endorsement of the slate presented for third-year probationary teachers to continuing contract status.
So move.
Jane, second?
Second.
Yep. Alright, any discussion? Great, all those in favor? Fantastic.
Okay. Now, if you reference your agenda note to me from Mr. Lauer, the Athletic Director Assistant Principal here at Handland Academy, again, you have a slate of coaches in the fall and winter sports. Again, I would ask for the recommendation of our Athletic Director Assistant Principal and Principal. I would ask for your approval of the coaches as presented to you in the exhibit.
So move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we go down to the reading.
Each coaching position is renewed annually.
Yes, it is.
Good question. I just want to make that point because that's come up.
And they're posted.
That's a, that's a great question, and the protocol we changed a couple of years ago per the Board Directive is we also post those positions annually. That's correct. Reading the essential behaviors and outcomes proclamation, this is Mr. Holmes.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our community share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, John. Employee recognition, a ceremony I enjoy every single year. This year, we have three faculty we're going to recognize, and we have the clocks that we give the professionals that Lucas is guarding very carefully. The three teachers that we're going to recognize this evening have a total of 86 years in our district, and the clocks that are guaranteed to operate. They read, this one here is Sue Sims, "Thank you," I should have my glasses on, "thank you for the time you have spent in mentoring those who were fortunate to have you and learn from your extraordinary skills and talents." Congratulations on behalf of RSU 22. So, we'll have our first lady come up, is Karen Boynton, where's Karen?
Mr. Lyons, at the last minute, she informed me that she couldn't make it tonight because she had another commitment that came up.
Oh, okay.
But I'm happy to accept her on the under...
But I do want to read the notes that have been given to me that all three people have provided for me. So Karen has been at the Wagner Middle School for 20 years, for special education, teaching children in that area. She's been the co-advisor to the Wagner Civil Rights Team. She also twice was a member of the New England Association Schools and Colleges Steering Committee, which is a great deal of work for people that have committed to that, and three summers she spent at a middle-level institute at the University of Maine with a team from Wagner. So, on behalf of the Board of Directors, we'll certainly make sure that Karen receives a nice clock that is signifying 20 years of dedication to our school system, so let's give her a... Okay, next, we have Sue Sims. I saw Sue earlier, Sue, you want to come right up? Stand right beside me if you would. Sue Sims has been with us for 25 years, has served as our school district. She also is a graduate of Handland Academy. 1979, I have it.
Thereabouts.
When she applied at Handland Academy, she was offered her former algebra teacher's position. Sue has taught chemistry, calculus, trigonometry, geometry in Washington DC and Alexandria, Virginia. She moved back to Maine with her family and operated a daycare before coming to Handland Academy, so from a daycare to Handland Academy, that's quite a transition.
I arranged my babies.
There you go. And speaking about babies, Sue also is a grandmother of two. So, on behalf of our school districts, we certainly thank you and congratulate you on 25 years of service to our school district. Thank you very much. Would you like to make any comments?
I just want to show... Thank you so much for the opportunity. It's been a pleasure, a privilege, and I love wearing purple. I'll always be a diehard Bronco. I'll miss being here. The faculty's phenomenal, new administration's fantastic, we're very fortunate to have you guys in place. One thing I will say on behalf of my current colleagues, we're all very concerned for the attrition rate within our schools. We've got to be competitive with salaries, because if we stay the lowest salaries for incoming teachers, we're not going to keep, we won't attract or retain the teachers that we've always had a strong base for, and that's been our, that's our concern, so I hope you hear that. And again, thank you so much for the privilege of teaching your children and grandchildren, and thanks so very much.
Okay, I'd ask the next young man to come up, Mr. Valentine? I told him if I make any mistake to correct you, because he has a long list. Dick Valentine has been in our school district for 41 years. Now, I'm looking at Scott, and I know Scott has probably been there, done that, right, Scott?
Yes, he does, earth sciences plus others.
Dick has been in the science department, he also served a number of years as department head, instructional leader, academic coach leader, whatever we have called those, he's been very actively involved, actively involved in that. He started the AP Biology class at Handland Academy. What year was that, Mr. Valentine?
1995.
1995, yeah. Matter of fact, I kind of remember that a little bit, I came here in 92, and at the time, you correct me if I'm wrong, we had one advanced placement class.
AP Physics.
And I did, I did a survey, which I was ridiculed for, because we had a number of kids going to John Baps, so I did a survey, and the number one reason, kids from Handland, New Jersey, Winterport were going to John Baps, is because of AP classes. And we moved from one to, how many do we have now, Mr. Tracy? 13 or 14?
Yeah.
So that's where we've gone over that tenure, and basically built off the AP Biology. Dick has been the recipient of the University of Maine Pulp and Paper Foundation Inspirational Teacher Award in 2012. He's a recipient of the National Association of Biology Teachers in 2009 as Maine's Outstanding Biology Teacher. Didn't know this until I received this, Dick actually started at Weatherby.
I was there, I remember.
Okay? Dick was at Weatherby for 7th and 8th grade for nine years. Now, get the next part. Now, Dick and I have known each other actually from college, and run a number of races competitively, I won't say who won or who lost, but he's been our coach cross-country for 38 years. 38 years. Seven times, Dick was the Kennebec Valley Athletic Conference Coach of the Year in cross-country, seven times. State of Maine 2003, Class B girls, cross-country Coach of the Year. So you can see, those are the highlights, I probably had two or three pages, but for some reason, that's what I chose to do. So you can see, a remarkable man that's dedicated his professional life for our school system. And I was thinking about this running the other day, Dick, so if you've been here 40 years, and let's say you have 150 kids a year, that's 6,000 kids, that's a lot of kids. And being... And as I said to Dick when I went to the event... That's, that's why I'm standing, you think not turning employees, probably in any profession, been in one employer for 41 years. So Dick, congratulations, we greatly appreciate everything you've done for our school system, very well deserved, thank you very much.
When I started in 1977, I really think I'd be here now, but it's been a good run. I raised my family here, at one point, there were three Valentines in the school district, two of them right over here, my wife Robyn and daughter Leah, teaching at the same time, that was, that was very cool. And I look out here, and I see some former students in the school board, that's really cool. Probably out here also, and maybe I need to get out of here before I start teaching grandchildren, I'm terrible. So, it's been a great run, I really appreciate the support of the school district, it's a great community to raise your family in, we have no regrets, and I appreciate the support of the school board, you have a thankless job, and hopefully you'll continue to grow the school, and I echo some of the sentiments that Sue said, hopefully we can grow the school in that positive direction. And Mr. Lyons, I appreciate your support through the years, and all of the administrators, I think we're all heading in the same direction now, and thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item is to bring into some focus some of the work that the administration's been doing over the last few months to look at the board policy with respect to the naming opportunities that we have in our school district. I gave you an overview in the agenda notes, this was discussed in the Athletic Committee. I would certainly answer any question, but per board policy, at this point in time, I would ask the Board Directors to embrace the administrative prerogatives with respect to the appropriate naming rights that we may look at in the future. So if you have any questions, I'll respond to that when we are looking for the formal board endorsement this evening, per board policy.
So move. Second.
Any questions or discussions? All those in favor?
Okay, thank you. Again, this is very important, as you know, when you drive in, you see the EMO P driveway, and the board policy really gives us a protocol and outline on how to do that. So at this time, I'm going to ask Assistant Principal AD Fred Lauer and Principal Tracy if they would like to come to the podium, please.
Good evening. In high school athletics today, it's becoming increasingly rare for coaches to establish and maintain a long career at one school. Here at Handland Academy, we were blessed to have a coach and educator who's able to do this for over four decades. This coach established an impressive standard of success, leading teams to 12 conference titles, eight regional titles, and one state championship. More importantly, this coach impacted countless young people who went on in life to utilize the mentoring and guidance he provided them. Thanks to the favorable vote that just, that was just cast by this board, it is my pleasure to announce the official naming of the cross-country course here at Handland Academy in honor of Coach Dick Valentine.
It's my honor to present to you this representation of the sign, which will be unveiled at the first cross-country meet this fall. The sign will read, "Valentine Cross Country Course at Reed's Brook Trails," honoring Dick Valentine for his 38 years of coaching cross-country at Handland Academy and 41 years of educating the students of RSU 22.
Wow, thank you very much. It's kind of blindsided me, I saw a few colleagues coming in, and I said, "What are you guys doing here?" I saw some former runners coming in, I'm thinking, something's got to be up, but I suspect anything like this, this is awesome. It's been great, the experience I've had, you know, with those athletes through the years, and I'm going to miss that connection with the athletes, I'm going to miss the connection with the kids at school, but I'm definitely going to miss that part of the experience, but I'm looking forward to coming back, running the Warren Bishop Run, and then just being, maybe they'll let me be an official at some of the meets, and do that, but thank you very much, this is, this is awesome, I appreciate that.
I'd also like to express appreciation to the board, because this is a very tedious task, and when we have a person that we're looking to recognize and do that in an honor way, in a perfect way, where the person is surprised, we, hopefully in the future, will have some other opportunities that, again, the board policy has scripted that for us, and we want to recognize the people in the right way that have devoted over four decades of service to the children of the, of the school district. So again, congratulations there, very well deserved. Okay, now, speaking of recognition, we have Mr. Mishell, Mrs. Corliss, Mr. Midor, and other people, music people? Is that right? Oh! And Mr. Ross! So we have a number of musicians here, so, who would like to start off, introduce? Mr. Ross, is that you?
That's me.
Alright, sir.
Thank you for having us here tonight. On behalf of Wagner Middle School and RSU 22, we've had another successful run with our students in our jazz band and show choirs and with our concert groups. It's just been a fantastic, another fantastic experience to have. So I'll speak on behalf of Wagner Middle School. As you know, every year, we compete at our district level, which involves schools from Searsport up to Melanocke, the son of Adam Scott, to qualify for states, and then when we qualify, we go into state competitions. So, the kind of the highlights for Wagner is that, I'll start with the jazz band. The jazz band is part of the new system in terms of, in the last couple of years, going from rankings 1, 2, 3, and 4, although they still slightly do that, and first, second, and third place for jazz bands, they're going against the standard. So the standard is gold, silver, bronze, and honorable mention. So, the perfect score is 100, 95 to 100 is a gold, and so... Right there for me. So, the jazz band, because of the way the, the numbers went, we moved up from Division 3, which is, Division 4 is the smallest schools, and Division 1, so a lot of the schools moved up to Division 1. And we've got silver, and the silver is from a 90 to a 94. Very well, I was very excited to have them do that well in our new division, and we also have a, a same musicianship award from our, our division, gives out five, as does every division, so everyone, either that solos, they kind of get some wine, or there's something outstanding about a musician in any group, so there, I don't remember exactly, I would say eight groups in each division, and each band has about 20 in it, so, I don't know how many are considered for that, I know the solos would have to be considered, but they only took five from each division, and Rachel Palmer from our group on Saturday phone got one of those awards, very excited when that happened, that's really hard to get, so we're excited for her, and our, all of our soloists in, I think we had four, six, I can't remember exactly, all got one ratings in their solo, so I know they were considered, but to have one that kind of stand out from those, those eight schools is impressive. And on behalf of the show choir, the show choir did the show hairspray this year, and we had approximately 12 soloists, all of them, in addition, got a one rating in their solo work. We're very excited to obtain a rating of a gold between 95 and 100, so I'm very excited about that. We had Morgan Gray, same idea with the jazz bands, five. One of them goes to choreography, then there are four musicians that are selected, Morgan Gray gets selected as an outstanding musician from our school, and we were very excited that, that we got gold. The show choir still does first, second, and third place, and to be honest with you, when you get to first, second, and third place, you get first, and second, and third by less than a point usually. So, I'm glad that with our jazz band, we were in the top three group, three bands in our, in our division. No one in our division got gold. And in the show choir, there are only two middle schools that receive gold ratings. Wagner was one, and you might know the other one. Very pleased with, the kids are amazing, I started out 20 years ago with a jazz band, and I got 12 girls in show choir, so, jazz band has 30 students in it, show choir has 31. We just completed our East Coast tour, one of the most awesome things about that is we get to go to different, excuse me, different schools, and I know for a fact that we have, because of that, has inspired two other school districts to start either jazz band or show choir. This year, we went to two schools we'd never been to before, we all started Smith School, which is awesome, and then we, this year, we went to Bucksport Miles Lane School, which we've never been to, that was really great, it was good to see them, and we went to Herman Elementary School, had never been to every floor with kids, we had a lot of kids, and that was fantastic. One of the funniest things I would say with the group that we went to in Bucksport, is we have a transition, it takes about three minutes, so I always say before we start the show, is when the, when the show choir's done, we have like three minutes to transition, so if any teacher or the principal has something to say, so, the music teacher came up with ukulele, and they sang a song, which is one of the songs that the jazz band was going to play. And like, we couldn't play it, like, "You could have played that song," and I held up the title, and they were like, "Yeah." And of course, the highlight for that is Pizza Hut for lunch, that's really great, but we always enjoy doing that. We get great, great community support, we get great parent support, great staff support, great administrative support, you support both jazz bands and show choir in the district, we just involve so many kids. One of the neat things I got today, and to sort of get you, is 8th grade teaching, get 8th grade students to write a thank you to someone in the building that, that meant something. I got so many letters, and I hope it touches them, so keep that up, that's great, I'm going to go.
Hi, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I'll get some Reed's Brook kids, you guys can come up if you want. I'll start, so, we team up, I do the show choir, and Becky does the jazz band at Reed's Brook. Our show choir season was so much fun this year, we did Rockin' Ages for our show, so it was like bringing all the parents back, I think the parents probably enjoyed it, even though they were singing along and everything. It was great, Katie's hairband stuff, we had a great time putting it together, and Mr. Ross was saying, you know, we went to states, and only two groups in the entire state, and that's in both divisions, were able to get a gold standard, that's a 95 or higher. Two groups in the entire state, and that was both of them from our RSU. So, I was pretty excited about that. The other amazing thing is, is that these kids are in two separate middle schools, and then they come up into one high school as one team, and they're working together now at the middle school level, they're helping each other out with things, they're cheering each other on. It's the coolest thing to see, go to an event and seeing RSU 22 cheering for each other as one team. But here's one thing that Mr. Ross didn't mention, and I... So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you guys for the support of allowing us to be able to do groups like this, because it's so valuable to these kids. It teaches them, I mean, to get up in front of an audience and sing and dance, of your peers, of parents, it prepares you for things in life like job interviews, it prepares you for having to put yourself out there sometimes when maybe you wouldn't, you have to learn that skill somewhere. And these kids do an amazing job with it, and I just thank you guys so much for supporting those programs. So I'm gonna let Becky take over with the jazz band stuff, but we have some trophy stuff. We got second place this year, which was super awesome, but we got those gold awards, and I have to say, those are pretty amazing, because if you look at the categories, if you lose pretty much one point, one point in each category, you can't get gold. And we were able to have both of our middle schools do that. It was awesome. Super happy.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Mallory, I teach band chorus at Reedsbrook and the jazz bands, as you just heard, and it's an honor and privilege to work with these amazing kids. I do want to talk, we just got back from the Fun Town Music Festival with the Symphony Three Band and Chorus, so a hundred and twelve students were able to go and about thirty-seven thousand parents. We had about, at least forty-one parents and family members go with us, it was a big crew, we were all in blue shirts, and it's a lot to take into small school to perform. The kid, it was really hot, and the kids were focused the whole time and did everything they were supposed to do. They were polite, they followed directions, and they managed, they went through the workshops even though they were about to fall over, because it was really miserable. And they were focused, and they were polite, and they were, they did what the clinicians said, and that, it just made us so proud. So we have a couple of flags to fist to come up and show from that festival. And they got, yeah, band and chorus. And they got high marks and great grace for their great job, well done. And the jazz bands also, so thank you, the jazz bands, the gold, it's not a gold award anymore, it used to be a gold award, and they broke it up into medals, and people, so I'm using the right language, I'm on the board directors for Maine Music Educators Association, I was part of the boat, and I'm a very competitive person, and I liked getting trophies. And I admit that, but I really do like the fact that we're not placing within our category, even though Reedsbrook, in the past, they always list the schools in order, so the last school listed had the highest score, and we were listed last. And it would have been really nice to say we came in first place at Bothamouth for the first time. But we were, we're in the highest division, and we're very honored to, and I'm actually, I'm kind of glad, we're right there with Brewer and Bothamouth and MDI, there were only four schools in the entire state that hit the gold medal in the jazz, and out of all, all schools, all divisions, in the state of Maine. So that's very, something to be very proud of, and the kids worked really hard, because they knew by the Tuesday before, they were a silver, about a silver performance, and they understand what it took, and they put it in, and they did it. And I just couldn't ask for a better group of kids, and they need to be up here getting that recognition. Anthony Cody's not here tonight, but he also got the outstanding musicianship award, they hit five of those out too. So we're very proud of them, I want to thank you very much for supporting them. We have about fifty kids that volunteer in our jazz program, which is a lot, usually there's only twenty in the band, and we make it work, and they're amazing kids. So thank you very much.
Good evening, thanks again for having us. I call on a second minute, as they were saying earlier. So I direct here at Hampden Academy, the jazz band, jazz ensemble, the R&B project, and Mr. Ligon does our jazz combo. We have four instrumental jazz groups here at Hampden Academy. And I just want to preface that with, about a week and a half ago, we went to the MPBN radio studio with Rich Tozer, and we did a live, well, it'll be a broadcast in the next couple of weeks, weeks on the airwaves. But we brought them there and to experience what it was like to be in a studio, and to record, and to go through that process, and it was very, very educational for us. And these kids were very patient, it took some time to get all the microphones and all the sound technicians, work to be done, and they were hanging out, just waiting for that to happen. But we'll let you know when that happens, and you can actually go in the MPBN radio on a Friday night and see the Rich Tozer show and listen to our kids. So that'll happen in a little bit. This year, we took four jazz groups to the district jazz festival in Howland, and all four groups got superior ratings, ranging from scores from ninety-three to ninety-eight. And then only two of those bands qualified to go to the state jazz festival, because our R&B project has got students that play the combo, so we can't have doubling of students in the same groups to represent in the same kind of division. The same thing with our jazz band, we had people who played in both. So our jazz band and our jazz combo went to the comms, to the state jazz festival. And if you remember last year, there was a real big population of very talented students that graduated. And the comment that I got most frequently is like, "Are you gonna keep this going? Well, can you step up?" And so we had probably almost an entire brand-new combo this year, except for maybe two people. And fresh to, you know, combo is probably one of the more difficult things, because all they do is improvise, you know, creation, composing in the top of your head. And so these kids are fairly new to that. So they went to the state jazz festival, and they got a superior rating with the bronze award, so we're very pleased with that, with Mr. Ligon's great work. And they played some original compositions that Mr. Ligon wrote, so that was great. Our jazz ensemble the next day went down, competed in Division Two, I think there were about eight bands in that division. And we came out with a, remember we talked about the ninety-five through a hundred, the ninety to the ninety-four, well, we were one point away from getting a gold award. And they were only one of, well, they were probably, there was one, one gold in our division, and we were probably the next in line, so we were probably in the top two, which is often where we are. So we're very pleased with what happened with that. So we had, most of our students get to get these one ratings for their solos, probably had nine soloists throughout the festival that accomplished that, so we were very proud of that. Then we traveled, you might have heard, we went to Walt Disney World. And we had about ninety people with us?
Eighty, eighty-some kids.
Eighty-some students, and we had some chaperones. We spent five days at Walt Disney World. We spent a lot of time raising money, we gave up twenty-three thousand dollars in scholarship for those in need from our music association, so we were able to provide those that needed the funds and the assistance to be able to be part of that, which is the first time we've given that amount of money out. So our jazz band did something called Disney Performing Arts, this was the coolest thing. You got a chance to see it, you know, it was just a really neat thing. And so we went to this room, and there was a Disney staff musician there, and he gave us a clinic on our music, and said, "Okay, you're doing this great, try this, try this, try this. Now let me give you some music you've never seen before." And he gave us a Disney book, so we're gonna learn this music in like twenty minutes. And he gave us two charts. And then they're recording the whole thing. So they have this Disney magic that always happens, right? And they have this movie from Little Mermaid, a little tape from Kiss the Girl, and he had just played Kiss the Girl, and they put it all together with us playing the soundtrack to that part of the movie. It is the coolest thing. So anyway, and they had the whole thing about having the track in your ear, and the drummer, he had to be exactly on time, exactly with the beat, so learning what it's like in a recording studio, like a professional beat, and that's how the real world does it, so that was kind of neat too. Our jazz ensemble competed in Festival Disney. And we have single A, double A, triple A, and quadruple A according to school sizes. And we were a double A. And again, we've been almost on that edge all year. So ninety through a hundred is a superior, and eighty to ninety is excellent, and these kids had an eighty-nine point seven. But what they did get, if you'd come over here, oh, you guys stand up, stand up, I'm sorry, forgot to have you guys stand up. So what they did achieve is something called Best in Class, and I get a chance to hug Mickey, that was kind of fun. We get a Mickey trophy for the year's participation, so they got the best in class of all the Division A schools, double A schools, they got the highest score. And then if you look at all the scoring after that, of all the jazz bands that were there, they were the top three of all maybe twelve bands that were there, so they did very, very well with that. So we're very pleased with their great work and their dedication to excellence, they're great ambassadors for the school system, and they do great work for us. I'm gonna just speak about a couple more things, you guys can stay right there, it's okay, I got a couple more things to say about you all. You might have noticed we went to the Woodford and Hampden Memorial parade, these kids put in very little time this year, because we had a lot of things going on, but represent this community very well, and serve, and honor these people that have served our country. So I'm always appreciative of the effort those kids put in as we do those parades, it's a sacrifice to give up some of that weekend, so I'm thankful for what they do. We also participated in two things, we went to the University of Maine with our wind ensemble this year, which they are all part of, and we performed with, we performed as part of the MNDU's conference, and they were invited by the board to do that, to do a clinic on wind ensemble programming. And Mr. Tracy was kind enough to join us for that, I'll let him talk a little bit about that.
So just to have the experience of watching our students go up there and get that direction, as well as work on a piece that was unbelievably difficult, to hear them perform it was amazing. But the opportunity to go and see our students directed by other people, as well as people in our district, and see them tackle a piece of music that was very difficult, as well as we had the opportunity to premiere a piece of music that I mentioned that was a difficult piece, and we had the opportunity to dedicate two of our songs to two of our former band members that have passed away in recent years. So to be able to be a part of that and be able to see our students really just rise to the occasion with such passion and energy was just amazing. So I appreciate the opportunity to be able to be there and watch that.
We're thankful for having you there. We tried something new this year, district band night, Mr. Col night did not happen because of some conflicts with AP testing and just pulling kids out to bring them together for that, so we tried something called a prison concert, which was all Hampden Academy groups, we had eleven groups performing that night. Why don't you talk about that?
So eleven groups performing in about an hour and a half, right? I mean, it was a pretty quick amount of time, but the energy and the production that went into doing this, and the students were running off the backstage, and running out behind the back door and going out through the gym, it was just really impressive to watch them step in. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the Facebook pictures, but there's some nice cameo shots during the Bee Gees thing of these two in some nice Afro wigs and some glasses, but it was just neat to see. And again, how often you get the opportunity, and I don't think we ever have, because we're usually using the PAC, to see all of our groups performing, and seeing students intermix and move together and hear all eleven of those musical groups perform. Again, just a great honor to see and be a part of. So I appreciate your efforts and your energy you put into doing that and performing.
The last piece I'm gonna talk about is, we're preparing kids for the next, the next thing, the next level. And the privilege that I have is I direct, I lead a professional R&B group, and from time to time, we'll go out and perform at the Cross Center for different events, I might have seen some of you there almost this past year. And so this year, I had two members of my band that couldn't be there, so we had some graduates, recent graduates, that have been part of the R&B project that we've had here for four years. And I called them to see if they could join us, and they fit in like, like they never missed a beat, pardon the pun, but they just were like, these guys were never, were part of us forever, and they'd been learning this music here at Hampden Academy all these years, and picked it up. And by the way, June twentieth, on Wednesday evening, at the Van Gogh Public Library, you can come and hear the R&B project, they'll be putting an hour on, hour-long show as part of the Van Gogh Library's Summer Concert Series. And we're back by popular demand, we did it last year, and they said, "You gotta come back this year," so we'll be there on June twentieth. So open to the public, and bring your lawn chair, blanket, and forward to see you there. Thank you again for your great support.
I'm not gonna talk very long, I'm high school artist, and I teach at Hampden Academy, and I also do third and fourth grade down at Smith School, couldn't not say that. I'm gonna invite Ascension and Voices Unlimited Show Choirs from the Academy to come on up with all the hardware. Two years ago, we found that we had so many students interested in show choir here at Hampden Academy, over sixty kids auditioned, so we decided it was time to add a second show choir here. And I did not have the time to do that, so we did decide that there was a lady in the community who does a lot of professional theater and singing, Rebecca K. Perry, who would come in and do that for us. We are hoping that that will go on the Stipe and List this year. However, both groups did extremely well this year. Ascension really is those students who are less experienced, maybe not as confident. And I just have to say that Rebecca does a fantastic job teaching them how to perform, how to rehearse, and all of that. And this group earned a silver award, just shy of a gold award at state festival, and came in third in our division. Voices Unlimited is the more experienced crew, and this year also has sopranos, altos, tenors, and basses, and they also have more instrumental accompaniment. And this group earned a gold award and second place. So we took second and third place in our division, only behind MDI. But we also had a special award for, a musicianship award for Abby Thompson, one of our, one of our altos in Voices Unlimited. Sadly, or happily, our seniors are at their senior banquet tonight, so our seniors couldn't be with us tonight, but I'm very proud of this crew. When they went to Florida, we took both crew, both groups, both groups earned superior ratings, and this is a division that includes all specialty choirs, meaning gospel choirs, chamber choirs, madrigal choirs, and show choirs, and jazz choirs. So they did earn gold awards, they did not place, but we're very, very proud of the work that they did. Thank you very much for your support, and thank you for recognizing these very special kids who really earn, earn this, these medals, these trophies and so forth. I have to say that something I'm also very proud of is I had both Mr. Ross and Mr. Mador as students, one of them at the piano and one of them in show choir. So that's equally as exciting for me to watch their successes as well. Thank you very much.
Dr. Wagner, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add two things. First off, we have a number of Wagner musicians, could you guys please stand and be recognized? Thank you for being here. And the second thing I just wanted to point out, just very briefly, recently, we had the opportunity to attend an event at the University of Maine, and the collective group of RSU 22 music staff were recognized by the Maine Music Educators Association with the Dale Huff Award for Educational Excellence. And that just happened a few short weeks ago, so I wanted to point that out. And there it is.
If you would, please, can you just elaborate on that a little?
I sure can. We are so proud of this award, because so many school systems either have a great band program, or a great chorus program, or a great orchestra program, and we feel, our philosophy is that everybody can grow through any of our programs, and so we support one another, as well as just doing our own programs. So this says, this award recognizes the school system and its performing arts program for demonstrating a commitment to well-rounded K through twelve performing arts education for all students. Their efforts exhibit the same excellence as the late Maine Music Educator Dale Huff, who dedicated his career to system-wide performing arts education.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations to all, thank you very much for coming, we're very proud of you and all the work and dedication and the spirit you put into our young children, thank you very much. Okay. Hard to follow that. Pardon me? Now, people...
Come on, Monday, September eighteenth, seven o'clock.
Mrs. Rollis, if you would please, can you just elaborate on another one?
I sure can. We are so proud of this award because so many school systems either have a great band program, or a great chorus program, or a great orchestra program. And we feel, our philosophy is that everybody can grow through any of our programs. And so we support one another as well as just doing our own programs. So this says, this award recognizes the school system and its performing arts program for demonstrating a commitment to well-rounded K-12 performing arts education for all students. Their efforts exhibit the same excellence as the late Maine Music Educator Dale Huff, who dedicated his career to system-wide performing arts education.
Congratulations. That's great. Congratulations. Okay, congratulations to all. Thank you very much for coming. We're very proud of you and all the work and dedication and the spirit you put into our young children. Thank you very much. Okay. Hard to call that. Pardon me? Now, people.
Tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Come on, Monday's district meeting at seven o'clock.
We have our district budget meeting. I have Mr. Tim Pease coming to be willing to be our moderator. The attorney will be with us as well to make sure that everything's done appropriately. So that's Saturday, Saturday night. And then, as we all know, Tuesday is our district referendum. I did send, I don't know if I sent the entire board or not, I know I sent Scott about the absentee ballot. If you're in Hampden, if you live in Hampden, you vote absentee ballot. When you put that in the mailbox, you need to make sure that that ballot's going to be in the Hampden Town Office Town Clerk's hand by eight o'clock Tuesday night. If that's not achievable, then that ballot will be void. Okay? So if an absentee ballot is relevant to you, or relatives, or neighbors, whatever, that's how it works. Okay? So that needs to be first and foremost. Tuesday night, eight o'clock, that's being the Hampden Town Clerk. Your fundraising report by Board Policy should be self-explanatory. You can see a lot of things going on there. This is presented for the knowledge of new board members quarterly. Any questions on that? I'll move on. Okay, so Lucas?
All right, sir. For those of you who don't already know, some students at Hampden Academy have recently been on a project within the school that is involved with raising money to help combat malaria in affected areas. So Philip, a student at Hampden Academy and a classmate of mine, has spearheaded the project and is here today to give a brief presentation about the project itself.
Yeah, thank you very much. I didn't expect that I would actually be allowed to talk in front of this school board. Actually, what I wanted to do is ask for additional promotion via social media resources, but then I found out that has already been done. And so I'm in kind of a weird position, so I guess I'm just going to ask for more donations and I'm going to explain why. So first, I'm going to explain, talk about this charity, and then kind of about the rationale and philosophy behind why we chose this exact charity. So the charity is Against Malaria Foundation. And what it's doing specifically is it's buying insecticide-treated nets, which kill mosquitoes. And so people sleep under them and don't get malaria. Malaria is a tropical disease, if somebody doesn't know, that is really lethal. So even though the disease rate has been halved over the last 20 years, still around 500,000 people die a year and 80% of them are children under 15 years old. It's mostly Africa, Papua New Guinea, South America, those areas are affected. And insecticide-treated nets is one of the best ways to combat malaria. So like one net costs only $2 and can protect two people sleeping under this net. So that's shortly about the charity. And now about the rationale behind it. So basically, people can give to charity for many reasons. One of them could be just to like make yourself feel better, you know, or I'm helping somebody, I'm a good person. Or maybe to make other people think that you're a good person, you know, like you can make sacrifices, you know. And like, you may not like think about where to donate exactly. You donate, you can donate, you know, to musicians without borders, you know, playing music somewhere. And some people don't have this goal in mind, like of saving lives. They can donate to, I don't know, museums and stuff. That's absolutely fine, I'm not against it. But if your goal specifically is to prevent as many people from dying as possible, then there is this charity, Give Well, that's what it does, it evaluates charities, yeah. And basically, it's a bunch of like Ivy League graduates sitting in an office 40 hours a week. All they do is just they search through charities and they look at their effectiveness, look at their transparency, and so on and so on. And so Against Malaria Foundation is one of the top charities. And they don't, not only look at transparency and effectiveness, they also look at whether there are gaps in funding of the charities. And so based on that, they give their yearly recommendations. So that's why I'm focusing on that charity specifically, because that charity is in their yearly recommendations for this year. If you're interested, you can go visit that website. So, and one of some questions that may arise is why give abroad? Why not focus on our country where we can help locally? Well, the thing is, of course, if you're feeling patriotic, yeah, sure. But if you kind of look objectively, for example, like in the US, $10,000 a year would be considered like poverty-level income. But there's this website called Global Reach List. And if you type in like 10 grand a year, find out you're actually in top 15% of income globally. So if you really want to help the most disenfranchised people, that is the best way to do it. And specifically, we have started this as a school project with Ms. Messler in our social studies class. And we raised some money already, so we raised like overall 700 and like for our school project, it's like 450. We can see like some friends from Russia helped, because that's where I'm from. But we've also raised considerable money from the school, but it would be much better if we raised more. So the link is pretty simple, it's just againstmalaria.com/hampdenacademy. And I would appreciate any help. Again, like any donation helps, that costs only $2. So you can donate with a credit card, whatever, it's pretty easy. Just go to the website and you will see instructions for the donate. Thank you very much, and thanks in advance for your donations.
Thank you, Philip. Thank you, Lucas. Anything else? Lucas want to add?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, Reagan.
Very good presentation.
Very good.
It was refreshing, actually.
Yes. I get your point. Is this an extra? Must be the extra.
Oh, nice. Additional coming around here? Do they open? So this is the monthly financial statement that we review each month. And each of the articles is detailed there with the percent remaining. What I'd like to review is that we do have 17% left in our budget. And I want to talk about some of the expenditures that are still going to be coming out of these funds as we move into the final weeks. Our financial calendar, of course, closes on June 30th. We still have two payrolls to be paid out in June. And each of our payrolls, just to give you some context, is about $665,000. We also have to have the money on June 30th to pay our accrual for teacher salaries over the summer. So that money also needs to be in line, and we're doing very well there. We will have insurances. We have payments that are made on insurance at different parts of the quarter, so we have a significant one coming up in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be doing that. We also have several invoices that are going through that we just received in the last two weeks. And we've actually let the Administrative Council know that tomorrow will be the final day to put purchase orders through for purchases so that we can monitor up until the 30th. We'll also be making a significant transfer out of Article 11. That's what we fund school nutrition services with. And there is $30,000, 33 to be exact, and we will be making the transfer probably the week of June 30th into that program. So as you can see, it feels as though we are definitely healthy. We have had some very positive points in our budgeting year this year. We've also had some challenges that we had to come up against, if you remember the windstorm. No one expected some of those things to happen, but we've been taken care of by our insurance company and we've seen some savings across bands like electricity, fuel use. That's been beneficial to us. Any questions?
You have one question, actually. So you were talking about having to have the money available for the summer accrual. So if we have two pay periods left and there are roughly $660,000, we have $2 million in there, we have plenty to make those two payments. But then, if the budget doesn't pass in a timely fashion, that leaves us with, you know, $800,000 or so in that line one. So in terms of, how does that play out if we don't have that? Because we'd have enough to make one more payment, I guess, essentially.
Right, so as we roll into July 1st, you're in the new calendar year, we would have enough for the accrual. There are four payrolls in the summer, so we would be able to fulfill our obligation. We would be looking, though, after probably August 15th, where we'd have to be making decision if the budget weren't to pass.
Right.
About some level of financing. Or last year, we did have offers from the municipalities that they would be willing to wait on receiving assessments, so, or giving us our assessment early, and we were pleased with that.
Okay. Without our, we could use fund balances. We'd have to use fund balance in order to get to August 15th, though, right? Because the accrued is for salaries, but in order to pay other expenses, we have to use.
Right, ordering, for instance, we would put freezes on that and we'd be making decisions about priorities. You're absolutely right. Women's duty of all forms.
Right. Or you could execute revenue anticipation note, it was a small borrowing, that month, 30-day borrowing process, if we had to.
We talked about this last year as well. If the budget did not pass even the second time, we're forced to use effectively this year's budget, but it only applies to certain articles. There are some that extracurricular, for instance, are gone? Or how did we discuss that last year and it's?
I don't recall they're gone. I think, though, that they were at risk.
They were at risk.
They were at risk, yes. They were vulnerable, yes. That's correct.
So basically, we would be forced to continue with a flat?
Yes.
Zero change?
Yes, yes. Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that, having the success of a budget. But those are the things you have to think about and possibilities.
Have folks been hearing anything, anything other than, I mean, we've had very, very, very light turnout at the workshops?
Actually, I had an interaction on the Winterport Town page with a gentleman who was really upset with how much the budget had gone up. And in the interplay back and forth, he wasn't upset with how much the budget had gone up. He was upset with the, how much the allocation to Winterport had gone up. And so we sort of talked through the different things, and then in fact, even if the budget for Winterport hadn't gone up at all, there was still going to be a significant increase in terms of what we were asking for with the town because of state valuation changes, not because of... And he made the point that Winterport's sending 26 fewer kids, and yet, we're going up. It's true, but the valuation just wiped out any, you know, any savings we would have had. So it wasn't a bad interaction. He's a good guy and just understandably, you know, heard the numbers at town meeting. And I'm pretty sure it was Phil. It was under the Winterport, it was on the Facebook page. It was the Winterport Town page posted what looked to me to be good numbers, explaining how the numbers got to where they were. So it was, that part was good.
I'd like to say I think there's been very good partnership this year with municipalities. We've had good communication streams and try to keep them informed and keep information flowing as best we can when we have hard numbers. So I certainly appreciate the communication we've received back and the feedback. It's helped us to make better presentations so people hopefully do feel informed and have insight. All right, then, we'll move to the Assistant Superintendent Report. We did have our bond anticipation note fulfillment. We did have a calculation error that was present on the initial bid for one of the institutions. That is an allowable correction because it didn't change any of the terms. That correction was made. The Katahdin Trust was awarded the award for the bond anticipation note. We have had that closing and our drawdown. So we are presently able to utilize those funds and it's exciting to have the project underway so soon. So thank you to everyone who helped with that. A budget forum was held on Monday night, and as we discussed, we did have relatively light attendance. But we're hopeful that the online effort that we've made this year with the videos and posting information is getting people what they need if they're not able to attend a meeting. So tomorrow night, 7:00 PM. Also wanted to let you know that we have had our first round of training. When we look at the article for the business office, we do see there's an increase in professional development costs. And we started the professional development for transition to purchase orders online. So we had folks in on the in-service day, and we know what we need to do starting July 1st. So ordering will start being based through that portal, and we're looking forward to efficiencies from that. Okay, lighting project pole removal will start. That's going to be the first step for the turf project, and that will happen on June 11th. So I want to just give everyone an update. We have shut down and closed the gates that run by the turf field. So if you're trying to shortcut through, like sometimes I do, you have to think twice. But the lighting pole removal will involve sawing the poles. So if you have anyone who attends a Hampden campus school, we will be letting folks know. They may hear some sawing during the day. I've been in contact with the actual contractor who's told me it will be as swift as they can make it, and there will be breaks between, but there will be some of that to be had.
Will that be occurring during finals?
We spoke about that. The windows at HA aren't opened because we have climate control here, and so we don't think the sound here is going to be substantial. And I asked specifically about finals. Is Fred here? Yes, we had that very discussion. If we find, though, that something like that is an immediate situation we have and we need to make a change, they understand they're working with the school. They've been absolutely fantastic about that. Turf removal will begin on June 22nd. Just a point of interest, we've had private businesses interested in using the old turf. And so we've had them coordinate with Net Sports. And so I think we have two businesses that are going to be receiving significant portions of the old turf to recycle it. And then we are also going to be taking the center portion of the HA logo and most likely be making a move to replace that on the side of the hill. So it'll be a nice memento from the first phase of having turf in RSU 22. But we have to get confirmation on how and when that will all happen. We are now moving on to, looking forward to discussing an easement for the Winterport Storage Tank Project. That's coming up later under Old Business. But I would like to just give you the details that the Winterport Water District has been very thorough in coming to our building committee, meeting with us, giving us information and responding to all of the questions that we had for particulars about this easement. Because of course, it is access to district property probably for a long, long time, if not forever. So we feel like that homework has been done very well, and we thank them for that. This easement is going to allow access to the water tank and the water pressure at Winterport. Wadner School specifically will improve leaps and bounds. So this is an advantage to the school. And we also have spoken to them about an option to perhaps water our fields out there by, because we have additional water pressure that will allow for it. So we're looking forward to the project. Propane tank installs will happen at Reeds Brook this summer and McGraw. And so those will likely start late June and into July. We have had RSU 22 garden additions and improvements, and we thank Brittany Lehman for that. She's been working tirelessly to start new gardens and to move the Reeds Brook garden to a new location. It's looking great. If you drive around the campus, I'm sure you'll see that. And then there was campus cleanup at Wadner Middle School, and I just want to give recognition to Chris Gould at Wadner School. He organized that entire effort with Dr. Glenn Cross, and the campus looks fantastic. So job well done.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
And then, school safety. I did attend a superintendent seminar along with a superintendent.
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it.
And then, school safety. I did attend a superintendent seminar along with Rick back on May 11th, and there was a good amount in that seminar about school safety, and we are taking all of those notes and recommendations to our safety committee meetings, so that we're constantly evaluating what we could be doing different, especially around procedures and protocols. Our facilities also need to be evaluated, and our building committee will be doing that on an annual basis based on recommendations, so we're moving forward in this space.
I have a question. It's my understanding that the Sheriff's Office is going to be doing some training this summer, I believe in August?
Yes.
Do you know if they're going to be doing a presentation to teachers, admin, or is it just a drill?
It's just a training drill on the date they've chosen to come. They have asked that there be some volunteer participation, and they've given us parameters around how they'd like us to select volunteers. But Brittany and I will be working on organizing a presentation to all staff members during our management day, and the focus will be on many of the school safety issues, and we're going to be inviting folks.
The, one of the deputies that's going to be helping facilitate that training has a presentation that he does that it may be worth looking into, having him present to-
What's his name?
John Knapp. I can get you his contact info.
That'd be great.
So he's offered to come in and present to the board if we wanted, or to admin. I recommend you as a presentation, I think that's a really good presentation, I mean, it'd be beneficial to teachers, admin, as a presenting.
Great, we'd love to know.
Yeah, I can get you his contact info.
Thank you. And that concludes our report. Questions, the board members?
Just a question, maybe I'll defer to a future policy committee. I guess I was disappointed or confused as to why the regulation for policy IMB has been basically tabled or not pursued. I thought that was part of the conversation we had about resolving that after quite a bit of board discussion, and I think a lot of us put our faith in the fact that we would see something more tangible to look at, particularly around parent negotiations. So I look forward to having future conversations at policy about that. I won't take up any more time tonight.
Thank you, Ross.
Is this the point I asked, the question I posed in the email? Or is that exactly the session?
No, that's fine.
So I posed a question today, there was an incident involving a student and some false allegations that were made that spread like wildfire on social media, and my question was, the people that made the false accusations are as liable as if the threat had actually been made, and I was curious how the disciplinary action was being carried out for those students.
We're weighing a variety of factors right now. One of those being the age of the student, one of those being the history of the student. It was a group of three that it kind of came from, but we were able to kind of pinpoint the one person that made up the allegation. So we're in process right now of discussing with that student the rights and wrongs, teachable moment, and seeing where we are. I think we could easily just suspend, but I'm not sure that's the right answer. I'm not sure that teaches the person the right thing, but that's something we need to be in continuing conversation about, which Nick and I have been dealing with most of the day.
Was the allegation made directly to somebody at the school, or was this something that statements were being made and then a parent brought it to the school?
So it was three students that went to our SRO and shared something about another student that they made up.
Okay.
So I guess that you have several policies. There's harassment, there's bullying or cyberbullying, or even hazing that might fall under the suspension category. I guess I would echo Tony's concern that the second worst thing is someone lighting a fire in an auditorium is yelling "fire" in an auditorium and having people run out. So I think the fact that the level of, the lack of thinking that took place in their part, particularly to knowingly go to an SRO, in my mind, which is an official reporting, it's not just a rumor, although there certainly were enough social media narratives passing around, including demands of the board of zero tolerance of immediate action when it was thought that the allegations were true. So I guess firm but fair is probably a good guide here, and I do think that there needs to be a life lesson. I agree that maybe suspension may not be it, but perhaps some time spent helping out the community and other events, just as another person might, if the shoe were on the other foot. It's unfortunate that all the parties involved went through what they did, particularly the guilty until proven innocent situation that we were faced with.
And I will just add, the dynamics of the situation is an interesting one, like we deal with on a daily basis. From one group of students says one thing, to another group of students that says another thing, to groups of students that don't get along, that's something we deal with on a daily basis. Rarely does it rise to a situation this, where someone does make a false accusation. I will say that in that process, I think there were some that truly believed this happened, so they got kind of taken along the process. So I have to hate to say it, but I really appreciate the communication that we had from students, the communication and the concern we had from parents, the fact that people were, you know, we'd been pushing to see something, say something, and because of one student's actions and thoughts and possibly perceptions, we acted on it and we looked after it and we communicated with all the right and appropriate people to, but we needed time to do that, which is, I think, unfortunate sometimes, that people think we need an answer now and we need to communicate now, and we need time to be able to process and make sure that we're protecting the rights of both sides.
I would like to commend the administrative team for the policy that governs or regulates the right of students' due process. I think that was afforded in this case. It may not have been as fast, this is social media type, which travels very fast, but congratulations to all involved, because you folks did a great job, and I thought the communication that went out today as well, I hope will convey to the community how seriously we take those issues.
Let me weigh in. I know you've heard probably far too much from me on this today, but I do want to say publicly, as we heard from the musicians tonight, I would also take the opportunity to give a goal status to our administrative team in the academy. We learned about this yesterday afternoon about 3:30, and Mr. Tracy, Sergeant Stewart, Mr. Ray were here this morning at 7:00. And me with all stakeholders, I arrived around 8:00, spent a couple hours, had many conversations with many people, including the student, the parent, and so on. It was extensive conversation. We analyzed what we heard, we're drawing some conclusions, we're trying to do the check and balance. But when I get the word from people that we're not paying attention to this, that could, nothing is further from the truth. This had immediate response this morning. I met with the student personally, along with Mr. Tracy and other people, this morning with the mother. There was extensive conversation, and the way I looked at it, one of my emails today to you, we have 745 youngsters in the school every single day. And it is a reality today, folks. It is a reality today of our society. And unfortunately, these things are happening, and in my opinion, they'll continue to happen. I appreciate Scott's quick response to Mr. Tracy's email he did up for us today, put it on the Facebook page, because we felt that was an appropriate response. And these are learning things for us in the 21st century, 2018, as I was sharing with Tony tonight, and we were talking informally. I didn't deal with this, folks, five years ago. It didn't exist. And it saddens me really, too, to listen to that boy today. Now, think about this. Not about me, Rick Lyles, but you're sitting in a meeting with teachers, the principal, the assistant principal, the SARS and police force, and the superintendent of schools, and you're a kid in high school. Think about that just for a moment. It was gut wrenching.
It turns out it didn't do anything.
Didn't do anything, that's right. And you're sitting, but you're sitting there trying to sift through all this, and all the innuendos that are floating up there, and the social media, and how that just, how that just explodes overnight. So I just, I guess my basic point, because I tried to keep this succinct to you today, is I really appreciate the promptness and the comprehensiveness of the conversation that Mr. Tracy had today with many people, trying to figure out and sift through the innuendos, the comments, read between the lines and bring that together, much like we do as parents on a smaller scale, obviously, but in the student body of 275 kids, so I really appreciate what was done here today.
Absolutely.
Not to belabor this, but I go back to the Camden Hills incident. Absolute garbage, flat-out lie, that all of a sudden, there's fire. Hampden, horrible school, horrible parents, and every media outlet picked up on it, and then when the video came out that proved that not a single word was issued, and that girl was blatantly lying, there was no retraction, there was no apology. It was just the sour taste that Hampden's a bad bunch of kids. And here we have, again, another student who did nothing except was a victim of bullying, and the only thing that's on social media is a threat that this kid never even made because he was being bullied. And that was the, it's just sickening that it happened to any kid, let alone this particular kid, because he's such a good boy. And, you know, public apology would go a long way, but I don't even think that would be a just punishment for this level of bullying, to pick something so visceral and so deceitful to target one kid, because any other action is not going to bring the full force of administration down, other than, hey, this kid says he's going to shoot the school up. Well, you're going to get thumped on, and to be that, just disgusting, and that deceitful and targeted innocent kid is repulsive. And I don't think that that should just go away lightly, oh, just because they were a ninth grader. And I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at you, I'm just, I am sick. My stu-, I was up all night, I, from the moment I heard it, because I've known this kid since he was a little boy, and for somebody to deliberately do something so vile.
I think that we'll have to trust that Bill and Nick.
And I do, I do, and I'm not, I'm just voicing my emotion because of how good of a kid and how just disgusting that was of an action.
I just want to say, you know, I commend you and your team, Bill, for taking the time to make sure you had the right answer, and you're doing the same thing again on the other side, so I commend you, but I do believe it's a very serious thing for her to have done that, but I do commend you for not jumping on her. You're, you know, you gave the time and made the right decision, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. A different topic, I don't want to stop someone, I'd be a little more to say, but have we ever considered the possibility of starting like a performing arts night at school here in the end? Because, I mean, we have, like, you know, the groups that come before us and that get just lauded by so many, you know, for so many different things, but when you have the entire music program come up, and it's just, it's golds and silvers and ones and twos and-
And it's like that every year.
And it's like that every single year. Every year I've been here, we've had a meeting that was, you know, as full as it was earlier, no offense to you folks of State, thank you very much, but as full as it was earlier, and it's all these kids from every single school, and you hear about the wonderment of it, and to have the five faculty members that were here tonight, that's what you build something special around. You have got five faculty members who are doing magical things, and not only that, you have non-faculty members who are doing magical things. I mean, there was a second class started by, that was basically started by somebody outside of the school.
Did you answer your question? Is yes. Matter of fact, I'm going to put Dr. Lyles on the slide in just a moment, because you're going to hear from her later. But a couple of years ago, and she may correct me, I misjudged something, a couple of years ago, we actually discussed that concept, but we never launched it, Scott. Is that a fair assessment, Ruth?
Yeah, so we had called it the RSC 22 Regional Talent Center. And I actually had done quite a bit of work on that, because this was sort of, you know, what I did in my previous life was school creation. But we ended up, one of the hard things, or the things that we came to, we had someone come from the state, I'm pulling a blank on the name, and she spoke to us about anyone who applies, we would, we have to take, and so having any type of, which, in this case, if we change the focus to a little bit of performing arts, I totally agree, we have like this huge melting pot and incredible talent and robust program, so why not capitalize on it? And so it's just, as far as like who applies, like you don't really have a lot of say in who you get to.
Right, it's a magnet school, it's not a charter school, so it's still under the public school umbrella, but I mean, we're, we're doing all of that with the students who are-
Here.
-within our own school, just the ones who want to be in this are the ones who are in it, and they're, they're making it work with different levels, and they're making it work with different levels of ability, and, and I just feel like it's a, you know, with the performing arts in it that we have, with the faculty that we have-
This could be a great example. You've heard me use the word, the term, regionalization before. This is a great example where there's actually incentive from state now maybe developed upon that, maybe the tide has changed over the last two years. That's a good question, Scott.
I'm more than willing to spearhead that again. I mean, that's like where my heart lies, is that type of creation, so.
Thank you, Ruth.
I'd also be a great recruit.
Absolutely.
We're always looking for ways to recruit.
Yeah.
The arts would be a perfect.
Sure. Has many advantages, that's right.
I certainly don't think, I mean, I don't know how we say. Ron, show us what you can pull together, Ruth, but I think that you, the board would be very interested to hear an innovative idea if there's a way to implement it.
Okay, I'll redraft what we had created in 2015, and-
So three years ago.
I'll do it with like a performing arts scope. Can you share that?
Jane, you have a question?
The email that came from Angus about the ballot envelopes, is that something that we maybe should consider for next year? Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
The answer, the answer is yes. Regan and I have not talked about that yet, but basically what Jane is suggesting, or what Angus Jennings, our town manager, is suggesting, that maybe RSC 22 should take ownership of the envelopes, but we send the people that have the absentee ballot, we'll provide the envelope and facilitate that from RSC 22 versus the town doing that. So we will look into that for next year. We'll talk to Paula Scott.
Right.
Paula Scott is the town clerk for Hammond, see what we can do with it.
Well, just his, the case he made, made a tremendous amount of sense.
Yeah, so we'll look at that. And that's why I mentioned earlier tonight about making sure that the postal office is going to say to you, assure you, the ballot will be there by 8:00 Tuesday. So we'll look into that, yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Jane, did you go to the town forum, council forum, candidate forum?
Last night?
Yes, I did. How was the town regarding the school district or school board?
Because it was, the format was a moderator, and you had questions that were, written questions that were handed to the moderator, so they just didn't come from the audience, and they didn't build on each other. There was really no questions posed about our budget. There was a comment from one of the candidates about the budget, and how high it, how high it was, but there weren't any, there weren't any questions about that.
Any other questions, the board members?
Okay.
Yes?
Before I get to my question, I just want to tell Tony, I share your disgust, I just want to say that for the record, you're not alone.
Thank you.
All right, I'm assuming you know this, this young man? Oh, I don't, and I'm repulsed, so just want to say for the record, you're not alone there. But shifting gears, let's get to something lighter here. I said in the email, I think Regan knows where this is going, regarding the turf, and I'm very happy to hear they're going to take the centerpiece, for lack of a better word, put it on the hill, if it's a great idea. So this question is really for Regan and/or Fred. Any chance that other people can get hands on maybe a square foot of this? Because I think that will be a fun, a fun thing, if it's even possible. I know you're probably going to make some money off recycling it, but how does that work?
It's quite a process in recycling it, and we talked about this for other uses of it. It kind of changes the whole dynamic of the contract, and there's some things that need to be changed there. So what they've suggested, like we've done with the two companies that have come forward, if people are interested in it, they contact NEX Sports directly.
Okay, so we go to them if we want, okay.
Right. Regan, anything you may add to that?
I think, well, you're absolutely right. Part of the contract was to have responsibility of the vendor for recycling, and one of the considerations that we were told ahead of time to be thoughtful about is that there have been districts or entities that have ended up with old turf, and you have people asking to use it, and sometimes it's asking to use it with children, and that we probably wouldn't want a responsibility around that. So we were careful in our contract to make sure we were very responsible, so now we don't have the turf at our fingertips to be cutting out. But I do think we wanted to ask for a significant piece, and we had a plan about how we might do that, to offer it to people who are interested, it could probably work.
But it sounds like we go through NEX, go through MM anyway, so, okay? Cool.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go right into committee reports and the finance committee.
Well, Regan-
Well, Regan reported on most of the things that we talked about. We met in the middle of the night. Um, very short meeting, right after one of the budget meetings. Um, we talked, uh, many of you remember a year or so ago, we asked our auditors to look into the BZ three month procedures. Um, so Shane White, our accountant, um, reported on that, what his findings. Um, he found no issues with, with anything that we were doing in those procedures. Um, he found all stipends and employee payroll taxes, employee deductions withheld, were withheld and counterfeited appropriately. Um, and the BZ department was satisfied with everything that was going on. I, I will read the next, uh, there was a recommendation made that if, that as we, uh, in the future, um, get into fiscal partnerships, uh, we may want to look into, uh, writing a service contract that, um, has RSU, says that RSU 22 may pay expenses of an entity on behalf and then bill for reimbursement, uh, much like anybody would maybe do if they were taking care of their financial responsibilities of another company. Um, if you were hired to, to be that responsible already, you may have to pay and bill, just like almost all of us. We reviewed our warrant review, uh, and we talked about the anticipation note. We've all, all actually, all signed that and everything at this point. Uh, a couple of things that we, uh, at the end, the, uh, some updates, uh, the district's locked in propane at a dollar forty-five a gallon for two years. Uh, at this time, or at that time, we weren't locked into diesel. We may be now. Uh, contract bids for filing are going out and honey wall contract, which is going to run for one more year. So, um, that was about everything we talked about that, that Regan hadn't already on.
Budget committee, Rob.
We've been bringing up budget for a while. We'll resume tomorrow night.
Um, athletic committee.
Karen, I would like to make one comment though. For you board members that have not participated in the district budget meeting, there is the opportunity and I would encourage you, if there's a question from the floor tomorrow night or at this point in the evening, I would encourage you to feel free to stand up to the podium and respond to that. It's not the superintendent's evening. I'll certainly do that as your superintendent, but I'm looking at Rob as our chair. Rob knows that budget intimately and the power of the voice is a board member versus a superintendent. So the point being, if, if, if you feel a comfort level, something asked, and you've watched this budget from beginning to end for the eight or nine, eight or nine meetings, then all you need to do to me is just nod and make sure that I will direct you to the podium. So just keep that in mind that you have the right, and I certainly encourage you to speak if you're comfortable with that tomorrow evening.
I'd just like to make a comment on that. So that Rob, uh, your first year as budget committee chair, we were there until almost midnight. So keep your comments light.
I think we had quite a bit of crowd participation.
It turned into a budget presentation because people didn't understand.
Yeah.
We're prepared this year.
That's right.
Yes, we are.
Okay. So nothing but budget. Sorry. Athletic committee.
Um, we did meet, um, I don't have any minutes, but I'm, Nick took them. I don't have them in here, right?
They are in here.
Oh, they are in here?
They made twenty-four minutes.
Yes.
Okay. I pretty much, uh, the biggest, our biggest reason for meeting that night, um, we were approached by John Babs to, um, interested in combining our hockey programs. Uh, their numbers are pretty low. Um, and ours have been, uh, they've, they've been okay, but they're on the lower side for a few years. Um, we talked about that actually two meetings ago. Um, Fred met with the AD from John Babs. They kind of, um, worked some things through, what it looked like, um, brought it back to the committee. Um, during this meeting, um, there was significant, I think maybe every hockey parent was there. Um, and they were not all for it, um, but, but as we, we were looking through it, uh, looking at some of the youth numbers, the youth numbers looked better than we had seen in a while, significantly better. Probably not as high as what we saw that night. They were showing maybe forty kids would be in our program in the next four or five years. Probably, it's probably not going to be that high. It's probably there, they're there now. I, I don't believe they'll be there at high school. Um, but I guess, uh, our biggest, uh, the biggest thing that came forth, uh, out of Fred's findings were the fact that we would have to be moved into the A division. So if we moved into the A division, not only would we have a higher competitive level, but most of our travel would be south of Augusta. So it would be significant costs and kids would be getting home later. Um, it just wasn't, it wasn't something that was going to, going to work for us. So we decided not to go forth with that.
So you need a goal.
Well, somebody's standing the goal.
Thank you. Building.
Before we leave athletics, did I understand from a nephew who may be in the know that we may have received a large supply of ultimate frisbee supplies? Or about to? Is this a surprise?
It's a surprise to me.
Okay. Could be something for future athletic.
So you're looking at an ultimate frisbee game now.
One at a time.
All right. Building committee, Alan.
Yeah, we met on the eighteenth. Uh, first item we discussed was the Winterport Water Storage Tank Project easement. It was Annalise Hefford, who's an engineer with Oliver Associates, and Brian Richardson, who's a Winterport president and I think a director on the water district. Interestingly, he lives in Leroy Smith's house. Anyways, um, we discussed the water tank storage and Regan's going over that. Then we went on to a drainage project. We present, at the Leroy Smith School, we have a drain pipe that goes across private property. We never had an easement for it. So we're altering the drainage floods. We're going to link that pipe altogether and stay on our own property. And then we had a discussion about the Wagner propane tanks. One of them floated out of the ground. And we had initially decided we would just have them all brought above ground, keep them that way. Cause I think in eight years they become ours, right? And so I think, well, they're above ground and there's maintenance required. It'll be easy. But I guess apparently they, they've come back to us and they want to put them back on the ground. So that's still being discussed. Then we went over the capital reserve project list, list of upgrades. Try to prioritize that.
And that's in the minutes.
It's all.
Great. Thanks. Negotiations, Scott. Anything to share that you can?
In open meeting?
It's going.
We're still meeting. Could you tell us what you had for lunch?
All right. Um, education. Amanda?
Yep. Education met right before this meeting and we reviewed, um, all year. Mary and her crew have been working on the comprehensive needs assessment document. Um, that is a requirement out of the, it's the new no child left behind. What's the new?
Every student succeeds.
Every student succeeds now.
Yes, that's a.
Yes. And, um, this comprehensive needs assessment is not a small task. I think she said before the information was filled in, it was forty-two pages?
Twenty-seven.
Excuse me. Twenty-seven pages before we filled the information in and we had to do one for every school. Um, and Jess asked a really interesting question about how many hours do we have into this project? And people couldn't even estimate. It was, so it has been a huge effort. And you have, Mary has sent in sections, uh, two sections to the state. She has not heard anything back yet. And she's preparing to submit the rest of the report. Correct, Mary?
Yes.
All right.
Good work.
Yes, a lot of work.
All the volunteers, staff, admin team on that.
And we asked another question and, um, while this is certainly a requirement for us to do and we put our full effort into it, what do you think that our district is gaining from this process, Mary?
Um, we are having an opportunity to look at what, um, our strengths and needs are. And we're having an opportunity then to, uh, look at what resources we need in order to improve in areas that are not as strong.
Can I jump in on that? I was on one of the committees for, uh, Weatherby and I think it was a great opportunity as we reviewed the information to see where our weaknesses, where our strengths, um, and the whole team that came together is really unique. Because you had, at Weatherby, we had, yeah, we had one parent, Jane and I as board members and then teachers and admin. And everyone had a different perspective. And at least at that school, the way Joe Seer set it up is we broke into small groups. So we were with people that we didn't necessarily know and it gave an opportunity to really learn. Everyone had enough to learn all the different perspectives and to look at how do we, how do we help grow? So.
So I think that's right. And this is going to be just completely my opinion. I think we do a lot of that. And the NEASK is also a similar process that we kind of look at what our strengths and needs of the, of the district are. They're just, I just want to remain cognizant of the amount of work that goes into all of this and making sure that the benefit works. Some things we don't have a choice. We absolutely don't have a choice for this, but want to make sure that when we do ask for all of these, you know, assessments and, and groups and meetings, that we're really, um, receiving the, a benefit for the amount of cost that it really takes from human capital. I think we just need to keep that, we need to keep aware of that. So we talked about that. Thank you very much for all of your hard work. I know it was a lot. Um, very exciting. There is some Title IV funding, which is federal funding. So we don't have to talk about it budget, um, right? And it is allowing us to start some robotics, um, from the K five level. And so there's some, um, funding associated with teacher training for a robotics program. And it's the dash and dot wonder programming platform. And there are already twenty, um, teachers and staff who have been interested in taking this training. And every teacher who takes this training also gets a robot for the classroom. And so we're going to compile all the robots, twenty at this point, and make sure that all of the kids K to five have an opportunity next year to, um, learn some coding with robots.
District Y?
District Y.
What about six to eight? Is there any robotics in six to eight?
There is a small amount of robotics and coding in six to eight. This, this in particular is for K to five. But yes, it will be district Y. Correct?
We're working on trying to implement as much as we can.
I think that was talked about at the McGraw assessment meeting, wasn't it? Coding and I think that that came up. Wanting more of that.
A question for Dr. Glencross related to it. It's by understanding that we have a 3D printer that was donated to Wagner?
Uh, yes, we do.
And is it integrated in any of the curriculum right now?
Uh, yes, it is. It's integrated into the eighth grade science, uh, program. They're making a, a number of different projects in there. And our tech integrator is also working with a fifth grade math team, two math teacher to, to integrate some things in, in that classroom. And we're looking at expanding in other areas.
We've had several, uh, teachers all through the district, uh, have the opportunity and have been successful in getting 3D printers through the Pearlott Foundation.
Great. That's where it came from. Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know where it came from. I was just.
Yeah. In fact, I want to add.
My son's excited to know there's a 3D printer. He says, I want to use it.
We, uh, we got one for Smith. It, it was, we bought one and they would buy one. And so we have one at Smith School, one at Wagner. That's the result of that project.
Um, we also talked about foreign language. We have a couple of, um, foreign language positions open. Um, and recruiting for a foreign language teacher in Hammond, Maine, or rural Maine in general, is not easy. And so while we continue to have these positions posted, we talked, we did some brainstorming about maybe some creative ways that we could do some recruitment. Um, and just started conversations about preparing to, about, for the possibility that we might need to be even more creative in how to, um, have our children with the opportunity to experience some foreign language.
Are there any services that do virtual classrooms?
We talked about that.
Like Skyping?
We did. There's Rosetta Stone is, um, is just one program that I'm sure people are familiar with. But we did talk about, um, at least exploring some opportunities for some, um, virtual or telecommunication.
Would that affect our teacher contract if we hired out?
I don't know. I don't think we got there yet.
It would not if we, as long as we don't supplant someone. If we can't find a teacher, then that would be the only option that could be available. So that would be very.
So we would be eliminating a position. This would fill the gap so the two, the students didn't suffer.
That's correct.
Okay.
Similar to what we do with respect to outsourcing physical therapy, things of that nature. We, if we can't recruit and find someone, we can't.
We aren't there yet, but we are meaning to think about it.
My fourth grader is just thrilled to be speaking Spanish to her sixth grade sister. So.
I know. I know. My kids love Mr. Lobo, whatever he's doing. They love it. Um, and then we just very briefly touched on, um, any sort of impact we might need to brace for, for the budget. And we kind of came to the consensus that we need to wait to see what passes. Um, and if it, our budget as put forth tomorrow night passes, then we feel pretty confident with, um, the curriculum that's going forth and the, and the program that's going forth for next year. Um, and if it doesn't, then we will have to have some pretty tough discussions probably.
Thanks, Amanda. Policy committee, John. Do you have anything you want to report on?
Um, only that, um, to respond to Rob's concern, that we did discuss the regulation. Um, we had a long discussion about it and we felt as though the regulation wasn't needed because it was really starting, the conversation's kind of turning into, it was almost a philosophical statement. We really felt as though the policy still highlights the roadmap. Um, and so the regulation really wasn't needed and it's going to be integrated in the handbooks in the school and the procedures.
So the regulation is going to be eliminated?
There was no regulation.
No regulation, no. This, this is a regulation that was crafted. And what I did is a result of amplifying Scott, John's point, the faculty administrative team, and asked them to integrate in their faculty handbooks, particularly with the advanced notice theme, if it's possible. If you remember, if you remember the theme that we embedded in there.
Right. So it's not a regulation, but there is a crosswalk that will be part of the handbook?
That's exactly right. That's correct.
Well, I mean, and that's, and that's great because I think, uh, for, you know, at least for my daughter who's six, the Google classroom, I mean, a lot of the instructional material is there for any parents of you. It's looked at as part of the whole homework regime, et cetera. So it, it seemed like for those parents that do care to understand, there's an ability to find out. But it was really that gap between things that weren't really spur of the moment. And, and we've got them, things that weren't spur of the moment, but things that were planned and just not thought through.
Right.
Then policy can be referenced, uh, handbook or does it have to be referencing a, uh?
Well, you, yeah, you, yeah, you could.
You know what I mean? I don't wonder if we should add that reference.
You could, you could integrate within the policy the theme that the components, that there's further, I'm just thinking of that. There's further information that could be conveyed in the faculty handbooks that you can respect at school.
I was just thinking adding that reference.
It's like a cross-reference at the bottom where you have statute or similar policy. You could do it that way. Yes, we could do that.
Just so parents don't worry.
That's a good point.
Uh, UTC, Alan?
Yeah, we had a board meeting. Most of it revolved in, uh, a big discussion. We still, we still have CTE funding. Cause it's all set now, but there's still some roaring and groaning about it. Um, we had the second reading for the budget, but to the result, the local assessment is zero. So it doesn't, not real bad. We had a first reading for the adult ed budget, which would have a local assessment, but I believe around seventy-six hundred or something, seventy-two hundred, whatever it is. It's only seven thousand dollars for us. There was some discussion about how this past school year that's ending right now was the first year we had over six hundred students there. The first year we had over six hundred and we already have six hundred and fifty-two coming up for the fall. So it's really growing. It's really at capacity, becoming an issue. The other thing, um, last Thursday night, I attended the ceremonies for those students that had earned their CNAs. And there were fifty-three. There were forty-nine young ladies and four young men that got their CNAs. And of that, there were fifteen that had CRMA's. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but they're able to dispense medications, group homes or settings. And there were five that had their CMA, which is a certified medical assistant, which is even higher. And the interesting thing to me is almost all of those students, I don't know the number, but it's a real high number. At eighty percent or more, go on to post-secondary education. They're just, they're not looking to work as CNAs, generally speaking, they're nursing students. And some of them go to the EMCC, which is the two-year R M program. There's some go on to baccalaureate programs, whether it's at Maine or wherever. But it's, I found that interesting. And one of those young ladies who earned her CNA was Alexis Roach from here at Hammond Academy. She was also the gold medal winner in the nurse assistant pro, part of the Skills USA competition. So she'll be representing Maine and Louisville next week in the competition. Hammond Academy's well representative.
What's her first name?
I think it was Alexis Roach. And I don't, I didn't, they, they had a program with all the graduates in it, but they didn't list which units they came from. So I don't know how many young ladies.
I don't know if you noted, if you saw that the, the UTC student of the year was a Hammond Academy student, Brandon Baberchak.
Thanks, Matt.
Alan, you said they're at capacity and it seems like they're gaining every year, but do they have a plan so that they can increase opportunities, or?
I think they do, but it's all in the curriculum's, curriculum's head. Because they really are, space is a real problem, and, and if you could see what they've done, what they've, they've, it's grown, they've added on to it. But funding is the issue, you know, he spent his time, you know, dumpster surfing up the mall and places like that to get a lot of the stuff that's in that building. A lot of the cabinetry, the tables, furnishings on the walls, you name it, everything's secondhand in the place.
And it's better than just what every other technical college state.
It's the diamond in the state.
If you, if people want to attach a metric of cost per student as a direct correlation to performance, the state would be sadly.
The state average for UTC, for state average for CTE funding, I think, is seventy-eight hundred dollars, and the UTC is forty-four hundred.
It's far superior.
It's far, it's a far superior school to all the others. I think there are twenty-seven or twenty-eight CTE centers in the state.
I'm not sure, that sounds right.
Because the issue with the funding is UTC got shortchanged on funding when the state changed the formula. Part of that, of course, is that the governor wants to provide every student with the same opportunity. So there are really large sums of money being spent on some very small schools and counties.
And also, remember, there's, there are centers and there's regions. And if you're familiar with Sanford High School, that new Sanford High School, a hundred and three million dollars every day, it's a high school and a region. And the money's flowing to the regions more so than the centers.
Yes.
Bitteford's a region, Lewiston's a region.
That.
Yes.
But, well, one in particular has a very high cost to be in here.
Yes.
They have their, their center or region, I don't know which, but they have a twenty-two center.
What's the difference?
Well, a region basically, look at it as a magnet of schools coming in, they're the recipient of all the schools, versus here, we're sending it. I don't really know exactly, Jim, but basically, it's, it's a configuration and the infrastructure is different than, like Alan was saying on the board, they have their own board, different, similar to what?
They're almost like, like being IRSU as a standalone.
Right.
Now, beyond that, I don't know, because I'm not really involved, Bill, can you?
One of the things a region has as an advantage, which is actually I like better about a center for us, is that a, a region can award a diploma on its own, whereas a center is tied to a bunch of other high schools. For us to have UTC as a, as a tie to us with what we get from it for our students is phenomenal, and if, if anyone ever talks about making UTC a region, we would, we would be concerned about that.
More time.
Thank you, Alan, um, behavioral review, Wally, I have a few.
We have an executive session.
First board? Do you have anything?
We've not met since.
Uh, wellness committee?
We have that, right.
Um, communicate, community relations committee?
We did meet on the twenty-fourth of May to talk, it was pretty much strictly talking about the budget and how we were going to communicate that. We brainstormed quite a bit on some questions that we wanted to, we thought people would want to have answered. And I've been working to put those together and then been putting them out on Facebook. And I also started putting out some of the questions that we put together last year, because we have pre-vetted questions on things like, what is the unallocated fund balance? And we can just move those out. So if anybody goes to the Facebook page, and also I, I put out a call to board members too, please go share those onto your page. Liking them is good, but sharing them onto your page is a much better way to get people to actually see those. And you might be surprised at the level of conversation it generates, and even if it doesn't generate conversation, it is generating awareness. So the more we can get that out there, the better, and, and it's just a, a great resource. And one of the questions is, how do I get more information? So that's, that would be a wonderful one for more people to get their hands on, to find that out. So that was that meeting, and then we did have our meeting earlier this week that I missed, because like Tony had softball, I am coaching farm league, and we had a game that night. So whoever was there wants to talk about that, that would be great.
So I was there, we met last night to, and really the only thing we did was, we had a presentation from a third vendor for an app. We've been looking at various apps to improve communication and streamline communication and how we put that communication out to our community, as well as how we interact with our community. Some of the local school districts have started picking up apps, and so it's something we're looking into. That was our third and last vendor, last vendor that we're looking at, we've looked at Straxis, Aptige, and School Messenger. And I think, I've been impressed, I think we've been very impressed with how simple some of these apps are, how user-friendly they are on both the administrative side and on the public side. There are really kind of three categories of things, if you will, that these vendors could provide. Just an app and for central communication, a notification system perhaps, and some of them would provide a website as well. And so we're going to weigh our options and sit down and kind of look at the pros and cons of each and then hopefully bring some recommendations to the board. I will say that I've been incredibly pleasantly surprised at the low cost for the app. And in some instances, it may be, we might have the opportunity to actually save money with our own communication.
Could this be used to assist with the parental curriculum communication?
It could be used to assist with all.
You know, an interesting side point on that, we were talking about some budget issues that I made meeting earlier this week. And the, the timing of when we do the budget was brought up, and because I had downloaded the app that I think Brunswick uses, or whoever Aptige was, I downloaded their app just to test it out. I knew when their budget meetings had been, and I knew, and didn't care a bit, but just because I had the app on my phone and I was getting notifications, I was aware of it. So if it'd actually been a, you know, RC twenty-two app, and it was, you know, my tax dollars. It, it just made it, I got more excited about the idea of using an app than I haven't, I guess.
Yeah, I could have used it on Monday when I came to the seven o'clock budget meetings, which was actually six o'clock.
Great, thank you, and great work on the Facebook, I heard some comments today in the Facebook thing about how informative it's been, so.
How wonderful.
Yes. Okay, policy consideration, John?
I got one here, um, for policy, JLCB, utilization of students, it's actually a requirement change from the CDC, Maine CDC. Effective starting next year, all students entering seventh and twelfth grade will now need to show proof of, and I'm not going to say this because I butcher it, but I'll say vaccine MC4V.
Magic.
Thank you. So this is, I've been looking for a motion for, for a second.
Rob, we'll give it to Rob. Any discussion questions? All those in favor?
And I'm going to hand it over to Wally for the next one.
So, as part of, after the superintendent evaluation, we have a committee to start looking at the evaluation tool and revamping it. Spent a lot of time working at different evaluation tools throughout the state and New England. And I'm passing around CBI, I think it's dash E, which is the actual evaluation tool, so you have a paper copy of that. There is an electronic copy of the folder as well. So we revamped that and then we worked on the regulation. Wanted to bring it to the board to take a look at, we, I, the committee made some changes to the regulation, brought it to the policy committee. Policy committee, we made a few more changes, and then this is what we have to bring forward. One of the discussions was, instead of just having one annual evaluation, breaking it up and having a mid-year evaluation and then end-year evaluation, having it more in line with the school year, rather than currently in March, we evaluate superintendent, discuss contract at that time. I believe the regulation, we also tried to put some wording in there to help really walk through the entire process. So you'll see quite a bit of red and stuff that I added, I think we got all the mistakes and got all the dates correct.
I think so, I think so, that makes a lot of sense.
But wanted to pass around the CBI dash R and CBI dash E to see if any board members had any feedback, comments, before we continue to move forward with this.
One question I had is, the contract goes to, the negotiated contract goes to the board for approval in July? And I was just wondering why you picked July because budget is in June? Well, May, actually, so I'm just wondering in terms of timing, that's, we're approving a negotiated, negotiated contract after we have a budget approved by the voters? So I'm just wondering why, why you selected that?
Um, I hadn't thought about the budget.
Oh, how have you not?
But a lot of this was done months ago.
It sounds like your body.
Before we started the budget, and there was, honestly, there was just, I got very confused with all of the red in my document. And we had one, I had one timeline kind of drawn out and then we brought it to the policy committee and started changing some of the timelines. I think the idea was trying to finish the evaluation around June time, so in the school year, being ready for August for the superintendent to lay out some new goals. So we could certainly look at.
Maybe just take that back to the committee to.
More if needed. But it was this valid, and then also the, the regulation was designed for twice a month board meetings, so you have the executive session to review as a board, the evaluation tool, and then next meeting, you meet with the superintendent, the executive session. So it really spread that timeframe out twice as long. So I appreciate that feedback.
If you're doing a decouple it from the budget process, because it is a bit of a time sink for superintendent and assistant superintendent, just beware or mindful of the fact that if we want to start budget sooner, the reason that Scotch is submitted to, so that it might be done sooner, there may not be a perfect time of year to do that, but certainly having it at least consistent so that we can plan on it and have time to discuss before a budget is finalized. But not to do it in the middle of budget season is probably wise, given the amount of time that I saw being taken up in preparation. Maybe it'll be quicker every year, I'm sure.
Well, in the last few years, it's been something we've kind of pushed off, pushed off.
Yeah.
And in the next few years, it may be something that our next superintendent is really looking forward to getting some feedback, so maybe it's something that we may have on a time when we're not that busy and actually have a special meeting where.
Well, to add to that point, to state the honest, you're all thinking, for the last three years, we haven't had the conversation you normally have where I had the evaluation and as your superintendent, we negotiate that contract, the composition of the tenure. That hasn't happened for three years, and it won't happen for a couple more, so there's another component that's in the plan here.
So I think for, for a second reading, we can certainly take it back to the policy committee, look at the timeframe a little bit more, and then bring that back next month. And then if you look at the actual evaluation tool that we passed around, some of the conversations that I know we've had is three sixty evaluation, we have administrators, we have teachers give feedback, how does that work? I think in, in some past years, students have, student board members have participated in that process. So you'll see at the top, I did include that checkbox for board member or student. In the actual, where I pulled this tool from, it was, it did have a administrator, a central office administrator, the option for them to provide feedback. As you scroll towards the end on page nine, that's where the superintendent will actually set goals for the year. Having been on the superintendent evaluation committee for three years, every year, there's confusion about superintendent goals. So we thought this would make it very clear beginning of the school year, these are the goals that the superintendent's going to be working on. And then there's no question about, well, how is the progress towards the goals and what are the goals?
I guess I just had a question about superintendent contracts, I realize we haven't done that for a long time. Do we normally start negotiating a contract right before the next school year, or are we normally doing it a year in advance? I mean, because you, contracts are like for three-year, four-year, five-year terms, I mean, so are we normally looking at doing a contract, like, you know, if we're, if we've got a three-year contract, are we looking at renewing that in the second year?
Yes, well, in the, in the past, we've done that, Joe, so on the annual evaluation, when I receive the evaluation, then we talk about what the composition of it is, and then what's the length of the contract.
Right.
So if you have your superintendent, let's say, has a three-year contract, after the first year, now they're down to a two-year contract. So in the conversation of compensation, you may also talk, do we want to extend the contract one more year, leave it as is, or two more years, or however.
So, so if we were doing it like that, then the, the budget issue's really not an issue because?
That's correct.
If you negotiate.
That's pushed off for another year.
That's correct, Joe, that's exactly correct.
Good point.
And just the other thing, to remind board members, the length of a superintendent's contract, unlike a principal, can be five years. Principal contract, the maximum's three years.
So we'll, we'll bring these back and discuss more. If anyone has any other comments, feel free to pass them along, or join us in the next policy committee.
Great, so, want to ask for a motion?
Need a motion for approval, first reading.
Allo.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for CBI R, evaluation of superintendent guidelines, any questions? All those in favor?
Next, Wally.
All business, I think this one goes to Reagan regarding water. Okay, so in your packet, you did see a sample of the easement for the water port, water storage tank. Basically, the easement is giving the parameters of the area for which they would like to have the easement, and you do have a visual that shows the plot of land. I certainly am coming tonight recommending that we do consider moving forward with this, I think the advantages to the school system and Winterport are significant, and the project has been well planned. Any questions for Reagan or Rob this? Now we'll ask for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to authorize the superintendent to sign an easement with Winterport Water District for the installation, operation, and maintenance of a water storage tank and associated water distribution systems.
I'll second it so long as it don't have to repeat the whole thing.
Great, great, any discussion, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. New business, we are going to have a presentation on summer camp?
Yes, Dr. Lyons is moving as we speak.
I am, I'm ready.
And to make a motion to extend the.
I think not quite yet, maybe after, Rose, are you going to be more than twenty-two minutes?
No, I'm going to be.
Then we have Brittany after that.
All right, so just a few things, as we were sitting there talking, I was digging through old files, and when my, when the talent center got shut down, Mary and I met and we did this specialization diploma. And so basically, it's like a school within a school type of idea, and what I did was I took the HA, now this was like four years ago. And I don't really know if I've even brought, because also I had two principals I go to. And I went through the HA handbook and sort of put everything into a, into different strands. And so with the idea that students could graduate with like a specialized diploma in a certain thing, and you can see that they have like required courses, then I would offer seminars, and they would have to attend so many seminars, they would do service projects in their concentration area. That would, the idea was that would impact RC twenty-two students, so like McGraw and Smith and like giving back. And then also, they would do a senior exhibition project. So I'm excited that we're talking about that again, because it's in my deflated balloons folder, so I'd love to get it out of there. And tonight, so, but I will share that with you guys, just so you know. So we're doing a summer camp, which I'm so excited about, and it's something that we've sort of talked about a little bit here and there for a while. And it is going to be one week this summer, and it's all about STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math. And you have the exhibits in your, in your exhibit, in your folders. But basically, it's going to be all day at Smith School. We are also piggybacking on their wonderful lunch program, so we get free, free lunch and free breakfast. And it's for, we try to involve all students, current, like. And, uh, it's for, we try to involve all students, current, like kindergarten through fifth graders, and this has been really hard with parents trying to register their kids. So like rising first through sixth graders will be our campers. Um, I'll have junior counselors, which are basically our current sixth through eighth graders or rising seventh through ninth graders. And then, um, if we get enough students, uh, high school students could be some of our counselors. I have three teachers that are, have already committed. Um, obviously Tricia Richardson, the other GT teacher, Danny Lobo, which obviously everyone does, and then Shayna Felice, um, from Mother's. So, and, uh, the junior counselors are going to help me run a robotics lab for the campers. Uh, we have a ton of robotics, not a ton, but through some grants this year, um, the GT, GT department has, um, received lots of different types of ro- of robotics and so the, and the middle school kids have had some time to play around with those, so they will be leading one of those. And, uh, so right now I need, in order to break even, I need to have 20 kids attend, which I thought would be a home run. Um, as of today, I have 12 students registered, so please share this information. Um, we try to keep it really competitive. It's 150 for the whole week if you, um, or $35 a day. If you have a sibling, $30 discount. The junior counselor is only $75 for the whole week because we are asking them to do some leadership in the morning. Um, so, and then I also included, and you have this in your packet, just a little, um, snapshot of each day, and I know that this is kind of small, but just some of the ideas that we'll do. Um, so the kids will rotate to different things. It's going to be a lot of learning and hands-on and, um, really engaging with science, technology, engineering, art and math. It'll be fun. So anyone that you know it's on the art, maybe I'll share it with you, so you can put it on the Facebook page. I have it on our Explorer Facebook page. Um, I've shared it with secretaries to send out to parents. Any other ideas of how to get, I've shared it with the Orno Moms Group, probably some Orno people there.
The Destination Imagination Team?
Oh, that's a good idea, okay. So that is it, summer camp. And also it's a, you know, one of the things that we don't have, you know, summer is, we want to encourage kids to continue learning and it's one of those great things too, so.
This is a really fantastic, if my kids were not already in a soccer camp and I'm going to talk to my wife about whether to move them for this very week, you'd have two more.
There we go.
And I will look to see if we can move them because this is a wonderful use of the space.
Yeah.
Piggybacking of the lunch program's a fantastic idea and having a STEAM camp.
And, you know, the other idea that, you know, if in my, when I was presenting it to admin team, I was like, oh, we're going to have 75 kids. And then if we do, like, this is actually a revenue, like, we can use this revenue for something. I would love for it to fund coding opportunities or things like that in the district. Um, and so, you know, like, I love the idea that we could use this to help fund other things, so, yes.
Have you reached out to Niles Park?
I have not.
And discovered museum?
Yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Because they have a bunch of kids, I'm sure, that, you know, are lined up on their waiting list for summer camps and maybe they'll have some spillover.
That's a great idea.
Turn this in your way.
Very good.
Same with the YMCA might have some spillover.
Oh, good.
Because they're waiting list for a lot of these camps.
Okay. We do not have one. We are accepting, open and accepted.
And I pay for price very competitively. I think some of the other camps are.
Well, we want, I wanted it, yeah, I wanted it to be priced like appropriately. I was saying, I was a twin and so I was always thinking like, if my mom had to pay for two of us, so, yeah.
What opportunities there for, uh, scholarship or donation that would become an anonymous scholarship?
Um, so we haven't, I haven't done that. I mean, that's sort of always been the back of my mind doing this, um, but I haven't. I mean, it would be easy to just go to kid and have them come, especially if we get over that 20. We could just have, you know, have students, if there was that financial need, it would be very easy to have them there.
I suspect there may be and certain.
Right. Yeah, after you reach that 20 students, it's sort of, everything else is.
Thank you very much, Ruth. Very, so some good ideas generated by the board members, thank you. Then next, Karen, we have the update from Brittany Lamler, wellness, school health coordinator. Brittany?
Hi, guys. I'll keep this brief, my children are at home, hopefully not burning the list down. Okay, that's for you to pass around. What I have, uh, I boycott PowerPoint presentations as much as possible, so what I have shared with you are the last couple of months of a wellness newsletter that Kathy Kittredge and I put together for employees, um, but it covers a lot of the things that we're doing within the district. Um, so I want to first just say Kathy couldn't be here tonight, but she has been a fantastic addition to our district. She is so on board with every crazy idea I bring to her, which is wonderful, um, and it's been nice to have a partner as, um, we tackle a lot of these, um, activities that we're doing in the district. So also in this packet, I share with you two other things. One is our 2017, 2018 SMART goals that are an addendum to our wellness policy. And these are, um, some goals that Kathy and I created with the help of, uh, the Bayworth Public Health Department and their, uh, 5210 Coordinator, Bonnie Irwin. And these are measurable goals that we have tried to achieve throughout the year and we have done pretty well on them. So I just wanted to give you that so you guys can see what we're doing or what we've done this year. And then I wanted to share with you my personal goals for the next year. Some of them, they're broken up into four categories, safety, so that's employee safety and student safety, and Regan already touched upon. Um, some of the things that we're doing in the safety committee, we've had a lot of focus, of course, on our student safety, including our buildings, professional development. We will be running some programming on management day. We have been to a couple seminars around school safety. We've met with the state police, we've done quite a bit of work and we're going to highlight that information for staff. We, um, are also looking at our data around slip, stress and falls, so we can improve that. I know our, um, work with comp numbers have gone up. Um, I'm happy to say that our insurance rates have stayed the same. I can't promise you that every year, so, uh, we want to continue working towards that. Student wellness, uh, there's a number of projects. I could go on and on and on and on about what we're doing with our students, but those are some of the things that I have, um, highlighted for next year. So one of them is having our wellness committee meet more frequently. I'm hoping for every other month on a personal level, my husband has deployed to Afghanistan for a year, so it's just me and my kids, so I'm a little, little nuts right now. Um, so, and, and I decided to take things on like coaching track and coaching volleyball in the fall, but it's what I do, I enjoy that kind of stuff, so I apologize if I miss something. Um, employee wellness, I want to focus on our, um, member assistance program. Our employees deal with a lot of things in their lives that we don't know about. Um, stressors, financial stressors, uh, opioid and substance use, um, physical abuse with loved ones and trouble with children. This program, the member assistance program, is free to our employees and, and their family members, anyone who lives with them, and it has so many great resources. I was able to get wills and power of attorney paperwork and all sorts of free stuff, so I want to be able to showcase that more for our employees. And then finally, I have decided that, um, I'm also, I'm growing great minds, but I'm also growing great propane tanks in the district. Um, so McGraw got a new garden, but also McGraw's getting some new propane tanks, which are happening to go in the same spot, so yay! So McGraw did have a school garden for about two weeks. I'm going to go dig up, it was really nice. I'm going to go dig up my little plants tomorrow and pretend that never happened. Don't tell Seth, the facilities guy, he'll have my head because I have him picking up lawn everywhere. It'll be bad. Um, oh, so bad. Um, so I want to work with our gardens. We're known within the state for our garden work and how we have that, uh, playing into some of our curriculum work. I want to expand on that. So, uh, you know, people are doing computer and coding and I taught the plants with kids, so it's, you know, all-around really good stuff. Um, we have put in, I'm looking also at improving our equity between Hampden and Winterport with the things that we do. And we were able to put in a ten-tree orchard down at Smith with the help of an organization called Retree Us, and they donated $2,000 orchard. We, I have to supply a little bit of money and some, um, labor, but, yes, sir.
Can we do something to protect our orchard? Last year the snowbanks were going right up into it. It's freaking me out.
I know. There's a beautiful heritage Wolf River tree that is like teeters on the edge of demise. It's one of the few Wolf Rivers left in the state. So, uh, yes, we do, I, I eyeball that, um, and I'm aware. I'm hoping that we, we have, we only broke one limb, so that's really a great thing. Um, so you can see that I'm doing a lot of, a lot of things in the district. It's done with the support of the, uh, the, with Regan and, um, Mr. Lyons. I, I really appreciate that and Kathy. Um, and I think you're going to find with Kathy some really great things happening in our, um, nutrition program. We have done farm business and we're really working to increase our local food usage in the district, um, and keeping our costs down, but doing taste testing and all sorts of great stuff. So there's tons of things. Again, this is just kind of a snapshot of the stuff that we're doing in the district. I am more than happy to, uh, talk to you about this forever and ever and I have some awesome cards, so why don't you hand those around? I have 500 of them and I only give them away about 10 minutes here. So, um, reach out to me, uh, just on another note, if you're interested in buying honey from our honeybees, it is for sale, um, through Ann Cowan. You can email her here at school and she will sell you a jar of honey. So that is it. Any questions, comments? Nothing?
Keep going.
Yes.
So you can see Brittany has a little bit of excitement there.
It's just, I mean, it, all the stuff you're talking about is just awesome and it's lovely, so thank you for doing what you're doing.
It's so fun and I promise I'm working because I saw Tony drive by the other day and I was in the garden. I promise you I'm working.
I knew you were.
I do get Wi-Fi, although he turned around and looked at me, I was like, I'm working.
Oh, he's voice well taken. Those apple trees, occasionally the superintendent's office, are really superb. They're really beautiful this time of year.
They're beautiful and they fruit, and in about four or five years, we'll have fruit down in Winterport too, so that's very exciting. And there's pear trees down there, we added it, so.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Do we have any, um, meeting dates that we need to set?
We have an adjustment first.
Do we have an adjustment?
We do. Remember you have article, uh, 12C.
Yes.
We have an unpaid leave request and I apologize to Amy, she's not here. She's, she left, okay.
Did we, did I skip over it? Because unless it's on the agenda, I tend to forget about adjustments.
No.
Did I skip over it? I'm sorry.
Okay. So you have, uh, a letter from Amy Lyne, who's a part-time speech language pathologist. She's expecting to be leaving September. Uh, she's looking to, uh, spend six weeks on her sick leave and then after the sick leave, uh, expires, she's asking for the board directors to grant unpaid leave the remainder of the year.
I make a motion. Second.
Any questions or discussions about that?
I only have one question, is do we have someone that can take your place?
This as well, so we have someone that can take her place?
We are currently advertising.
For a substitute?
For two days a week, yes.
Okay. What are the, what are the chances of that?
Uh, it might be very good.
Okay.
Oh, okay, well, that's good.
Okay.
Some optimism, so that would be like in the early October timeframe, so.
So we do like a long-term sub, how would we, how would we do that?
We would pay that person.
Does she have a contract? How, how, is she?
Linda, we pay the speech pathologist on the teacher contract, remind me.
No, we, we had to negotiate, had to negotiate last time.
Thank you.
This is the second time that we do it.
Yes, that's correct.